Roll call. Director Hanson.
Here.
Meek.
Here.
Myers.
Sorry, here.
Peterson, here. Ray.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Weineger.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, in a few minutes, we'll be conducting interviews with two finalists for the Douglas County School District Superintendent of Schools. The purpose of the interviews today is to inform the public as to their backgrounds, experience, and potential to fill the role of superintendent for the district. During the interviews, please do not interrupt the interviewees or the board members, and that includes in between questions. We should have roughly an hour interview for each interviewee, and we just ask that you respect the time and allow all attendees, both physical and virtual, to hear what's going on. Any attendees who create a disturbance or disrupt the interview process will be asked to leave the room, and thank you for your support. With that, we will be bringing in our first finalist, Ms. Erin Kane. And thank you, deputies, if we can remove her from the building. Good afternoon, Ms. Kane. Welcome to your interview process here with the board. We're expecting roughly an hour. We don't have to hold strictly to that or under. And with that, we'll get directly to questions, and the very first thing we'd like to do is have you please tell us about yourself and your history with the school district.
Good afternoon. You know what? I'm gonna hold this. Thank you so much for having me this morning. I really appreciate it. A little bit about myself and my history with this school district. I've been, my family and I have lived in Douglas County for 22 years. This is where my children grew up. They are all in college now. In 2004, I started American Academy, so I've been a part of this school district in one way or another since 2004. I started American Academy as a very small charter school at about 300 students. Today, we serve 3,000 students and about 300 employees across three campuses. In 2016, I had the great privilege to lead this school district for two years as interim superintendent. It was an incredible privilege, and I'm very, very proud of the work that we did during that time. We increased our academic state report card by 4.2 points. From 2016 to 2018, we got to just under accredited with distinction, which was a huge amount of growth for a large school district in two years. In fact, growth increased by 13.7 points during that time. When I started in the school district, there were 15 schools on performance plans, or excuse me, on improvement plans, or priority improvement plans. 14 of those 15 schools moved to performance plans in the two years that I was there. We increased math and English language arts growth for minority students, students with disabilities, free and reduced lunch students, and received the ELPA Award for Growth and Achievement of English Language Learners during that time. I can't take credit for all of those things. All of those amazing things were done by our teachers in Douglas County School District and our amazing school leaders. However, as the leader, what I did do was create high expectations and set the conditions and the environment that empowered and inspired others to be able to do the great work for our 64,000 children in this school district. Also, during my time as superintendent, turnover was a big problem when I came in in 2016. We had a horrible 20% turnover of teachers and almost 25% turnover of staff when I started in 2016. Both teacher turnover and all-staff turnover reduced by seven points during my time in our school district. Our leader turnover, school leader turnover, reduced from 25% to 8%. Two leaders left, a net of two leaders left the school district during my time as interim super, and sadly, we've lost about 20 since. So I certainly think one of our challenges is to just really build that stable foundation because we know that our school leaders help stabilize everything for our teachers and for our families, and most especially, for our students. Also, during my time in the school district, I reduced central administration by $20 million. I found $20 million in savings by making things as skinny as we could. And we redirected that $20 million to our highest impacted schools that had our highest impacted students to make sure that our resources were truly going to our children and to our schools. It was a fantastic time. I absolutely loved almost every minute of it. It was incredibly challenging. I fell in love with everyone in this district. I have so much affection for our amazing neighborhood schools, our school leaders, and most importantly, our amazing Douglas County teachers and staff. And then I returned to American Academy. I navigated COVID from American Academy. I think no matter our approach, we can all agree that was the most challenging time that any leader, board director, or anyone else has ever faced in education, and it was certainly tremendously challenging for all of us. I'm happy to be on the other end. But we worked really hard to have a COVID strategy that would keep our kids in person. We kept our kids in person last year, five days a week, all year. We also offered a remote option for our families that needed that and for our staff that needed a remote option. At the end of the year, we did a staff and parent survey, and our COVID response received about 92-93% satisfaction from both our parents and our staff. So we're very proud of that track record. But COVID has certainly been really difficult for all of us to navigate, and at this point, I'm not really sure that it matters who was right and who was wrong because now we just need to move forward and get back to the business of really focusing on our children. And so that is a good summary of me. I should have mentioned my background is in engineering. I did, most of my high-tech career was in the data science field. My master's degree is in public administration. I did a lot of time studying research and studying the methodologies behind research. So for me, for COVID, I read all of the studies firsthand rather than listening to what anyone else had to say about the studies because that is literally what I learned how to do during my master's degree as well as my career in data science. Thank you.
Great. Director Myers will have the first question.
Good afternoon, Ms. Kane. Another nice day, isn't it? Please define the roles of parents, teachers, administrators, and the school board in the education of a student. And then as a superintendent, how do you see these roles working together?
Absolutely. I'll start with the school board. I see the school board in a governing role, very much setting the vision of the district, setting the goals, the ends, the outcomes. The superintendent's role is to execute on that vision and on those ends and outcomes. The superintendent's role is not to get into an individual classroom and tell a teacher how to teach. It also isn't to go into a school building and tell a school leader how to lead their school. The superintendent's job is to execute the will of the board and communicate that vision down to the system and support the system in the execution of that vision. Teachers, I believe very strongly that our teachers and leaders need to be empowered to do what they do best. The teachers in this school district are incredible. They know what they are doing, they know what their children need, and we need to free them as much as we possibly can to do that. Likewise, with our school leaders, I had the privilege of working with all of the incredible leaders in this district. They know how to lead their schools. We need to make sure that we give them the space to do that and that we support them and that we make sure that we remove as much red tape as we possibly can. We need to do all of that while balancing autonomy with the fact that we are indeed a system of schools, and we have to make sure that our families have a K-12 experience that is consistent. So when our kids go to middle school, we certainly don't want our middle school to feel like they are, they have a bunch of strangers from a bunch of disparate schools. We need to be able to make sure that that transition is smooth in terms of their education and that we know those students really well all the way through that K-12 journey. All of those pieces need to fit together in order to provide our kids with an awesome education. But really, at the end of the day, an awesome education takes place in our amazing classrooms with our amazing teachers. The role of the superintendent is to set norms, set a culture and climate, set very high expectations in terms of growth and achievement and the well-being of our children, and make sure to inspire others and to empower others to be able to go do the work without creating an environment of fear.
Director Hanson.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Yesterday, we had a great opportunity to talk about your vision for the special education services that we're able to offer here in Douglas County, and I'd like to continue that conversation today. And I think that the place I'd like to start is just a general definition of how you see or how you would define an exemplary special education program for all of our students, PK through 12.
Our special education programming is all about taking care of the individual needs of each of our individual students. As I mentioned yesterday, I have experience in addition to running schools that serve special education students. I have experience as a mother of a special education student, and I know what that looks like on both sides of that table. When we in this district put together our special education task force, a number of themes came out of that around what we need to address in special education. Those themes were around professional development, funding and staffing, communication, parental development, and mental health and behavior. And some of the things that really came out strongly and that I believe specifically that we need to continue to work on is certainly providing professional development not only for our amazing special education professionals but also for our general education classroom teachers. In my experience, I have found that one of the most valuable things for general education classroom teachers is to do simulations that show them exactly what it is like to be in the shoes of a student with special needs. That's incredibly important. I've seen a number of those simulations and participated in a number of those simulations, and it has made a huge impact on me both as an educator and also as a parent. I remember the very first time I participated in a simulation, my own daughter has dyslexia, dysgraphia, ADHD, and slow auditory processing, and I participated in a simulation that simulated all of those things and essentially put you in her shoes, and I spent the next two days crying for my daughter and how difficult every single day is for her. It was like she was trying to write with her left hand every single day. So I think really building that sense of putting yourself in their shoes for general education teachers is really important. It's really hard to be a teacher. It's hard to navigate a classroom full of 20 to 30 kids with many, many different needs. And so I think that kind of professional development would be really helpful. I think we need to continue to pursue science-based reading strategies that are truly based on the literature and the science around how students learn to read. Learning to read is not something that comes naturally in any kind of way in the way that learning to speak does. I also think on a pragmatic level, I'd like to see us have better facilities for our bridge students. I feel like our bridge students somehow end up in the spare trailer or the spare closet or whatever it might be, and those students deserve better, and I think we really need to prioritize our resources and our facilities to make sure that we are truly taking care of every single child and also focusing on those life skills for our students with special needs. One of the biggest challenges that many of our kids have is that social capital piece. So that ability to interact with others is hard for all of them, whether they have significant special needs or mild, moderate special needs, and really being able to help our staff and our students focus on those things. And then the last and most important thing is establishing a culture where every single parent that sits in an IEP meeting feels that the individuals in that room are fighting for their child. Even if they disagree on the how, even if there are a few disagreements around the IEP, every parent should leave an IEP meeting feeling like everyone in the room is fighting for their child. And on the staff side, staff members should be able to be in an IEP meeting fighting for kids without a huge amount of fear of saying the wrong thing. Sometimes we get so litigation-focused that we depersonalize IEP meetings in special education, and I think we really need to find that balance.
Director Peterson. I'm sorry, go ahead. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I agree entirely and would love to know implementation steps and what that looks like across the system, from visionary ideas to reality.
Well, we have to get the right people in place. When we spoke before, you mentioned Mr. Rundell. I'm a big fan of Mr. Rundell, and I think he was a big loss for our district. And so I do think we need to find the right person to be able to implement the vision that I just outlined. It's really easy to say we need staffing and we need more funding for special education, but it turns out that money doesn't grow on trees, and so we really need to be creative to make sure that we're really putting our resources where our priorities are. So I certainly feel like we need to do another significant review of our budget to include our overhead and all of those things to be able to see if we're using the resources that we have as efficiently as we possibly can and making sure that we're directing as many as possible to our children. But truly, finding the right person is going to be really, really key in that role, and that would be a significant priority.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up question on the same subject? Go ahead, Director Rick. I agree with you, Erin, regarding the loss of Sid Rundell, and I'm wondering, I know you mapped out a vision and certainly mapped out the themes that we discovered when we did our special education task force. When you listen to parents, what are you hearing in terms of their perspectives of what needs to be different in that arena when we're supporting students with special needs? If you could just capture that.
You bet. One, I definitely, as you do, hear a lot about the implementation of science-based literacy strategies. Those strategies are really key for our students with special needs. Really, they're really key for all of our students, but in particular, our students with special needs, in particular, our students with dyslexia, but not just our students with dyslexia. Science-based reading strategies help all of our kids. I also hear parents, it has been my experience, that when parents are upset and end up initiating a lawsuit in the end or initiating an OCR complaint, it really has more to do with they just didn't feel like anybody was rooting for their kid. They felt like they had to go in there and personally be like the warrior for their kids. They felt like the parents that walked in the school and all the administrators and the teachers were like, oh, no, that parent again, right? So it's just, I think a partnership with our parents is so incredibly important, and we have incredible special education teachers in this district. I have met many of them. I have talked to many of them, especially as we worked on the Andrefe case and other things, and I know how incredible they are and what great work they do. But parents who are not feeling heard in their schools by their teachers and are really feeling like their children's needs are either not being met or dismissed, that is what I hear the most from parents, and I really feel that that is something that we can address through a culture change.
Director Williams.
Hi, thanks for being here. What does keeping our kids safe mean to you, and how would you approve school safety if you see any room for opportunity?
Absolutely. So first of all, this gives me a great opportunity to clear up something that has certainly been out in the media of me. So I want to be so clear. I am not in favor of arming teachers in Douglas County. I certainly do not do that in any of my schools. It is entirely unnecessary. Here in Douglas County, we have law enforcement only a few moments away, and we have, we are blessed with school resource officers and incredible partnerships with all of law enforcement throughout Douglas County. If we were a district or a school that was in the middle of nowhere where police are 20 minutes away and we can't afford a school resource officer, do I want to take an option of arming a staff member off the table for that school? I don't. But that isn't us. We have law enforcement right here. There is no reason for us to have teachers or staff armed that are not specifically designated under our security policy to be so. So I want to be really, really clear about that. We've got a great partnership with law enforcement in Douglas County, or at least we certainly had a very strong one during my time here. After the horrible STEM shooting occurred at American Academy, just like across the district, my families were shaken and scared and upset, as all of us were as parents. You know, just like many parents in our district, I got the text from my high school daughter at Rock Canyon, and they were hiding in the gym, and she was terrified. None of us want our children to be in a situation like that ever. What we did is we immediately held a forum for our parents, which included Sheriff Spurlock and myself, and we sat in front of very, very emotional, very upset parents. Hundreds came, and they came to talk about security and their concerns. I held a similar forum for my staff in the immediate aftermath of that horrible tragedy, and we had lots of conversations as a community, and I think that is really important. I think it's important for us to have conversations with our parents and staff as a community to make sure that we're not missing anything and that there aren't holes that we need to fill. And I think it's really important to do that with law enforcement, and of course, we're blessed to have an incredible security department here in Douglas County that has partnered with all of our schools. Certainly continuing to practice and be vigilant about making sure that our teachers and staff feel empowered and know what to do in different circumstances, as well as our students in an age-appropriate way. Definitely need to practice and know what to do. At my schools, we implemented a watchdog dads program. We have that at several schools across our district as well. The name of it is Watch Dog Dads, but it's not just dads. It's moms too, and grandmas and grandpas, and we have a volunteer that works directly with our school resource officer, and we have somebody there almost every day just making sure doors are locked, keeping an eye on things, building relationships with teachers and kids. That's been incredibly successful in the schools where it has been implemented. I think school resource officers are a key part of security, and not just security. We just recently got school resource officers in the last few years. Maybe it's not perhaps entirely necessary in a K-8 environment, and I wouldn't trade it for the world. Our school resource officers have incredible relationships with our kids, which is so important. Our kids, you know, they're high-fiving our kids as they arrive at school, they're in the halls with them, they work very closely with our administration. I think we need to continue to train with our school resource officers to make sure that our school resources officers and our administration are on the same page as far as anything that happens from a discipline standpoint with children and where one role begins and the other role ends. We've seen some issues with that in our district and across the country, and we need to tackle that head-on. I think that we need to work with our security department and, again, talk to our families and our staff to see if they believe that there is more that we need to be doing. But under no circumstances am I in favor of arming teachers or staff that are not security staff in this school district.
Director Meek.
Good afternoon, Ms. Kane. As you know, our district's mission is to provide an educational foundation so every student can reach their full potential. Students have the greatest stake in their own education, and their engagement is essential for us to fulfill that mission. So could you please provide specific examples of how you have in the past and will in the future worked to include and elevate student voice when it comes to decision-making for the school district?
Absolutely. I think student voice is incredibly important. Our students are our ultimate clients, and making them feel empowered and making sure that they have a voice in what is going on is incredibly important. I think it's really great that the district has the Student Advisory Group, and it's really great to continue to work with them and receive feedback from them. I think it's also critical to visit, when visiting our high schools, to not just visit with the adults but to also visit with the students. I had the privilege of spending a lot of time with a lot of students when I was in this district, but one time I remember in particular was sitting around a conference table with a group of representative students at Eagle Academy, one of our alternative education campuses, hearing their perspective on their own school, their own experiences, because their experiences were so widely varied, and their feelings about education and their optimism for their future. I'm not going to lie, I left in tears, just so incredibly proud of the resilience and perseverance of a group of students in our school district. I wish every adult had been able to have that conversation. Within the environment that I'm in now, within my K-8 environment and my 3,000 students, we, among other things, we survey our students every single year, have forever, including the second graders and the third graders, all the way up through our older students, through our middle schoolers, and we ask them things like, do you feel like you belong? Do you feel safe? Do you feel like you have an adult you can trust? Do you feel like your teachers care about you? Do your peers care about you? Are you treated well? Are you bullied? Lots and lots of questions that are age-appropriate to just be able to help us get a sense of where our kids are at. And then we make sure that we follow up with our kids to talk about, here's what we heard you say, and here's, you know, here's what we're looking into in response. We made sure that they had free comments in every single question. Very funny, the little guys feel like they need to fill in every comment, no matter how many times the teachers tell them that they don't have to. So you have all these paragraphs about this one time, five years ago at this other school, this thing happened to me. It's very, kids are amazing. So I think that it's really, really important to talk to them. I think it's important for us to continue with student council-type structures. We have that structure even in our middle school. It's important for kids to feel like they have a say in what's going on, not only in their education but also in their environment. Things like what kind of classes they're passionate about and interested in, what is their response to how things are being taught. I know a lot of teachers that very much value the feedback that their kids give them about, is what I'm teaching working for you? Are you understanding? Do you feel like I'm supporting you? All of those feedback loops are entirely necessary. So those are all the ways that I have experienced engaging kids and would continue to engage our awesome students. Could not be more proud of our students in Douglas County, truly. We have incredible students.
Director Weineger.
Thanks for being here today, Ms. Kane. How will you build and maintain trust and partnerships among employees within DCSD and between DCSD and the community at large?
I think that is something that is really important now. I thought it was really important in 2016 when we had a similar situation of conflict, and I think it is actually even more critical today to begin to build trust. I think for starters, we need to be honest about each other's intentions and really listen to each other. I think there is so much hyperbole in our country right now where intentions on both sides are being completely exaggerated. sides are being completely exaggerated and blown out of proportion by a small percentage on either side that are making us feel like we are further apart than we have ever been. We are not. I think it's really important to understand each other's intentions. How would I build trust? The biggest way we can build trust is to build relationships and to listen. When I was in Douglas County before, I spent the first six weeks of my time visiting every single school in this district and engaging with their staff, the principal, often the students in that school, and understanding where they thought we were and what we needed to do to gain trust. I also went to every single work environment. I had the privilege of riding on a bus route, one of the coolest experiences of my life, truly, very eye-opening. And engaged with employees in operations and maintenance and, and bus drivers and our classified staff, many of our staff members. I think that's really important to continue to do. We need to engage with our staff and our families and talk to them. There is so much discord right now that I also feel like we need to tackle the discord head-on and understand what it is that everybody is afraid of specifically. And then put that all down and address each one piece by piece. As far as teachers in particular, I very, I'm very anxious to have the privilege of being able to engage our awesome teachers. I would like to be able to make myself available to answer their questions as often as I possibly can. Maybe that's an every other week Zoom call that is open to all teachers in the district, and they can throw anonymous questions out. And just making sure that we engage with questions and feedback and really seek to understand each other instead of engaging in hyperbole, instead of engaging in exaggerated intentions on either side. I also think that we need to clearly communicate the financial situation of our school district, how our school district is funded, what our visions are, what we're looking for for the future, what we want for our children. All of those things need to be clearly communicated to our community and to our families, especially as we look towards a potential bond mill in 2022. We have to be super, super honest and transparent about where we are in, in all aspects. And finally, I think that parent-teacher partnership is incredibly critical. I know it has been my experience that during COVID, parent-teacher partnerships started to break down. They didn't break down because anybody was doing anything wrong. They broke down because our parents and our teachers no longer had the ability to build relationships and be face-to-face. And I think that, that really where that parent engagement starts is at that parent-teacher level, not in a the parents boss the teachers around kind of way, or the parents sit in the back of a teacher's classroom. I would never want anyone sitting behind my desk as I'm doing my job. That would be horrible. But more just in a, a feeling non-threatening to have open conversations with each other.
Just a quick follow-up on the, the second part of the question about building and maintaining trust between DCSD and the community at large. One of the first things that this board did once seated was to vote 7-0 on the acquisition of what was known as the Wildlife Experience or CU South. We're now calling it the Legacy Campus with a specific focus on CTE as one of its missions. Can you talk to your vision for the use of that facility, specifically in the context of building trust and partnerships between DCSD and the larger community?
Absolutely. I'm extremely excited about the acquisition of that building. I think it gives incredible opportunities to our students. I know we keep saying that not every student is going to go to college, but I actually think that is becoming increasingly true, that every student will not attend a four-year college. Employers also are no longer necessarily seeking students that are attending a four-year college. They need specific skills, and they need them now. I think it's really important for us to partner with all of our employers here in Douglas County and in the larger area to make sure that we're preparing our students for a future with those employers. I think every student should leave high school either with their college acceptance letter and they're heading off to their four-year degree, or they're heading off to military service or something in particular, or they've got some kind of certification from DCSD that will allow them to be able to enter directly into the workforce, into a career, not just a job. I think we need to really think about our real-world preparation beyond just academics, things like financial literacy, emotional IQ. These things are really important. Social capital, as well as leadership skills. I think we do a great job of a lot of those things, and we need to continue to have a more concerted effort in those areas. As far as the Wildlife Experience in particular, I'm very excited about what is already planned for that facility. So we have nursing, hospitality and catering, robotics, cybersecurity, renewable energy, aviation, construction, architecture, and manufacturing. I think those are all really important. Engaging with our employee, our employers here is going to be really important. Our top five employers in Douglas County, we are number one. Douglas County School District is the number one employer in Douglas County with 8,800 employees. The number two employer is Charles Schwab with 4,500. Think about the difference between number one and number two. Dish Network comes in third with healthcare companies following and financial services. So those are the employers that we're serving in Douglas County. And then, of course, we have in the larger area employers like Lockheed Martin. I have a lot of relationships with, within those employers, and I know that our staff does as well. And we need to continue to leverage those relationships to build partnerships so that we are producing students that, that will be able to help each of those employers further their causes. But I want to focus on the number one employer for just a moment. As a school district and school districts across our country are facing teacher shortages. And, and after COVID, we are going to face even more significant teacher shortages as we move forward. I think that is something that in a career tech ed standpoint, we need to tackle head-on. We have 64,000 students in this school district, and a lot of them have been dreaming about being teachers since they were in elementary school. I hope that we can capture that passion from teach, for teaching for our students, one of which was one of mine. I hope we can capture that teaching passion from our students and be able to offer them a career in tech ed pathway that will help them cut some time and money off of college and also give them a guaranteed student teaching placement here in Douglas County so that we have the ability to grab them once they have finished their teaching degree or at the end of their teaching degree and be able to have them student teach at home with us here. So many of our families stay in Douglas County. We have lots that move here, and people joke, we don't have natives anymore. But we really do, because we've grown. People move here, but they don't tend to leave. Director Wanniger is a great example of that. She is, has started her life and her family in the same place where she grew up. I've started my life and my family within 10 miles of where I grew up. So many of us do that. So to offer our kids those opportunities and to be able to solve our own workforce challenges would be pretty incredible.
Director Ray.
Good afternoon. Do you need a break to take a swig of water? Okay. A lot of talking. You mentioned discord earlier in, in the polarization in our community right now. How will you navigate that polarization, especially around political ideologies? And more specifically, what are your thoughts about the superintendent having associations with organizations that may also trigger polarized reactions in our community?
I think everybody as individuals have some kind of position in terms of politics, and I think that's fine. I don't think that judging what people do as individuals is necessary. If you're referring to me in particular, Director Ray, I am a registered Republican. Everybody already knows that. But as, in, in my personal life, however, I don't see a role for, what's really interesting to me is I don't see a role for that in leading a school district. I, I don't, I, I think ideology is entering this way too much, particularly right now, and particularly from, I think as Director Meek has mentioned, a national, a national narrative. I have always considered myself to be extremely centered. In fact, my husband and I just had dinner the other night with some neighbors of ours that are on, that disagree with us politically, and we laughed until midnight, and we debated issues, and we had a fantastic time. And it gave me so much hope for the world that there are lots and lots of people that want to just engage in ideas. And that, that's where I'm at. I want to hear every good idea. I want to listen to every good idea. I don't put a political lens on any of it. I want to hear good ideas for our kids here in Douglas County, and I'm always willing to change my mind. And we talked about that a little bit before. I have changed my minds on a number of things. For example, I, although I was never in favor of vouchers in Douglas County, I want to be crystal clear that I am not in favor of vouchers in Douglas County School District. It is our job, you're all's job, as the Board of Education of Douglas County School District, and the job of your superintendent as the CEO of Douglas County School District, to take care of Douglas County School District. If I'm running an organization, I can't imagine offering my clients money to go to another organization. My job is to make my organization so awesome that they would never want to do that. And so as a school district, I think the focus should be making our schools so awesome that any talk of vouchers that's out there goes away, because who would ever want a voucher when your opportunity to go to a school in Douglas County is amazing? I believe that it is our job, the Board of Education, your superintendent, to focus on the public schools in Douglas County and making sure that each of them are the absolute best that they can be and that we are supporting them and taking care of every one of our 64,000 kids. I'd also like to see us attract back the kids that we have lost over the course of the pandemic and have them come back to our public school system. We have an awesome public school system in Douglas County School District, and I could not be more proud of it. I, I veered from your question. Your question was about polarization, so allow me to return. I have a history of sitting down with everybody and learning and understanding where they are coming from. As I walked in today, there, there was a small crowd of people outside. I had hoped to engage with one of them, to say I would be happy to talk to them after this is over and ask, answer any questions they might have, but they were all in the middle of media interviews, and so I, I walked around them. But I am happy to engage with and talk to anyone, and I really, really enjoy talking to people who may disagree with me or may think they disagree with me and engaging in real discussion and real solutions. We just need to be really solution-oriented and especially really kid-oriented. I do believe that we all want what's best for our kids. We wanted what's best for our kids during COVID. We wanted what's best for our kids during the security debate. I can tell you that people who want guns in school want their kids to be safe, and people who don't want guns in school anywhere, you know what? They want their kids to be safe too. We are all worried about our kids, so let's find the common ground where we can take care of our kids.
Since you brought up the voucher issue, also wondering, is that also, do you also feel strongly with the Choice Scholarship Program, which was kind of a pseudo-voucher program that, that a previous board that we served on, some of us served on, struck down back in 2018? Do you still have those same feelings for that kind of program as well?
Thank you so much for allowing me to clarify. Yes, I am not in favor of that program or any, again, I'm not in favor of, I don't think it is our jobs as running Douglas County School District to pay money to people to go somewhere else. Now, school choice and vouchers have a place in our country. They do, at least in my view, but it isn't here, and it isn't in the context of Douglas County schools. It's a state legislative issue. If we're worried about, you know, getting kids from inner-city Chicago out of failing schools, then that is an issue that we need to go deal with in inner-city Chicago. In Douglas County, we do not have failing schools. We, our schools are amazing. At American Academy, when people are going through the lottery and, you know, sometimes they're wringing their hands about whether or not they get in, I'm always like, listen, you have nothing but awesome choices in front of you. This is not like Harvard or Yale. You have awesome choices in front of you, and we really do in Douglas County. We have incredible schools, and I could not be more proud of each and every one of them.
President Peterson, can I have a follow-up with this topic?
Same subject. Go ahead.
Yeah, just the polarized community. I mean, it's no secret, our community is probably more divided today than it was before the election. And so I appreciate having the conversation around how our next superintendent will help us bring that community back together. So I'm wondering, do you have any specific examples of your community school being polarized over an issue and, and kind of how you work to bring the community together?
Certainly. Both security and COVID are very recent polarizations of our community. Last year during COVID, again, our community was just as divided as yours was, very, very, very divided. We had people who wanted to pretend it wasn't happening, and we had people who never wanted to leave their house, and everyone in between. And I have a great deal of respect for all of them. One of my goals is to always respect views that differ from mine or from each other or whatever it might be, to respect and listen and do everything I can to accommodate where people are at. Because again, all everybody wants is for their kids to be safe. That's it. That's all we all want. So COVID is a great example. We did in-person learning. Again, we did full-time in-person learning, but we offered a remote option that was perfectly aligned with in-person learning. So in other words, our families were actually able to, they were feeling okay, they would come try out in person, see what they thought, see how it was going, see how the cases were moving. As soon as they got nervous, they could depart and go into remote, and their kids were literally aligned and doing the same thing so they could go do that and then come back when they were ready. I mean, we really tried to make sure that we accommodated and respected all of our families and our staff. I had some staff members last year who were our in-person teachers who became very, very concerned about COVID. And I more than happily allowed them to stay home and zoom into their own classroom while I had somebody supervising the kids so that they were able to maintain, you know, what, what they felt was best for them. So just working really hard to try to talk to everyone and understand where, where everyone is coming from and find common ground as much, as much as is possible. This past, the past few months with mask mandates, I found that to be, as I imagine you all did, more difficult to find common ground than anything I have seen before. But I'm happy to say that, again, that's moving behind us and moving forward. I think there is common ground in everything left that we are fighting about, a lot of common ground. And again, I really look forward to speaking to people that, that, that think they disagree with me or, or that think we don't have any common ground, and I bet we do, because I want to hear from everyone, and I want to make sure that I take everyone's feedback into consideration and bring people together as much as possible.
And one last question, and then we'll give you an opportunity to ask some questions of individual board members of the board. My question is around some things that seem to be a priority coming from this board. We are scheduled to vote on a, in a staff compensation model and benefits package next week on the eighth. There is sufficient funding, as we have been briefed by our cabinet, to support any compensation and benefits package for two years. Describe what you believe your role would be in successful passage of a mil levy override if it is placed on the ballot, and how you would ensure sustainability of these programs if an MLO is not passed in the next two years where we have funding for it.
So I think my role would be several things. One, I mentioned earlier, it's really important that we make sure that we, that our financials are being used wisely and efficiently and that we're very transparent about that as we talk to taxpayers about funding. Taxpayers need to be convinced that we aren't wasting money and that the funding that we have is being used well, and I, I believe it is. And I think that we need to make sure that we're communicating about that. I also think there is just still an incredible amount of misinformation in our community about how school districts are actually funded and continuing to be communicative in a very clear and simple manner about how funding actually works in public schools and getting clear and simple manner about how funding actually works in public schools and getting that message out everywhere possible. In 2018, when we worked towards that bond mill, myself and my team did a tremendous amount of work towards communicating with our community about funding, about the way things work. We really laid the groundwork for that bond mill. And in fact, after I left the district, I continued to go out and advocate for the 2018 bond mill everywhere that I could because it was the right thing to do for the staff, the children, and the parents of this district. I actually have continued to advocate for funding over the last four years for our school district. And I have continued to communicate everywhere that I possibly can how this district is funded. I think we need really clear messaging. I think that the bond mill needs to be really focused. When you try to be everything to everyone, that often confuses messaging when you've got, you know, seven bullets. That's really hard. To me, as a taxpayer and as a citizen, I would like to see a bond mill that is focused on compensation, being more competitive, and building new neighborhood schools. Super simple. Those are the two things that this district really, really needs. We need to get our particular teachers, but also the rest of our staff. We need our bus drivers to be more competitive. We need our operations and maintenance folks and our classified folks to be more competitive. Frankly, our principals and assistant principals aren't super competitive. I think we need to communicate about where we sit in all those areas relative to the other school districts in this state and really be able to communicate that compensation is a big issue in this district if we want to continue to retain and attract the best people. We need to have a comprehensive communication plan, a comprehensive plan to be able to get out to the community. It will involve far more than the superintendents. We need to train and empower our principals, our district leaders, our Board of Education, our advocates in the community to be able to go out and get that message to their communities because there is no way that a single one of us can talk to the 300,000 people that are in Douglas County. But it is really important that we get a comprehensive, well-defined, non-complex message out everywhere we can that really just talks about our needs. I also think this is more than 2022. This is the way school districts are funded. Whether we like it or not, the way school districts are funded is that capital needs and maintenance come from bonds. And the only way to maintain competitiveness with other districts is to be able to have mil levy overrides that are proportionate to those other districts' mil levy overrides. And so, I also think we need to really talk about our community, about expectations for the future and really creating a map to the future that says, listen, you can expect us to ask for a bond every four years or whatever it is that, you know, that we sit down and determine we're going to need to maintain the 99-plus facilities that Douglas County School District has to keep our school buildings maintained, to really start to improve our school buildings and also to accommodate the growth that is coming. We have growth coming in Sterling Ranch. We have growth coming in Parker. We have growth in Crystal Valley. We have growth in the Canyons. There are places where we absolutely need new neighborhood schools. We have not built a new neighborhood school in this district since 2011. That is a really, really long time. We also, on the other side of that coin, we also need to look at our feeder areas that have declining enrollment because our district is so large that we have areas of growth and we have areas where we are declining. And we need to be able to look at both of those things and figure out how to balance it. But our community understands that it is nowhere as easy as let's just pick up an under-enrolled school and plop it into a growth area. That's not how that works. So we need to be able to accommodate both sides of those coins and have a plan that is clearly communicated and looks out 10 to 20 years to our communities so that they are able to see what our plans are both for growth as well as for areas that are in decline.
And just the follow-up. So the second part, and I know it was a long question, was how would you ensure sustainability if an MLO, you know, bond is for capital? But if an MLO is not passed specifically, how would you ensure sustainability of the comp and benefits program?
My apologies. I thank you for reminding me of the second part of your question. So if an MLO does not pass, one, we are going to need to again examine our financials and manage to get a little bit skinnier wherever we can. When we're talking about compensation, if there isn't a revenue change, then, you know, we need to look at the, if we want to be able to be even remotely competitive, we have to look at, you either look at revenue or you look at the number of people you employ. Those are kind of the two factors that you can control. I would also say we need to get as much money as we can over to the comp structure. I believe we should pass. I would recommend passing the teacher's desired compensation structure as has been laid out. And what we would do is just be able to, we'd have to slow down how we invest in that compensation structure and be really clear to our teachers about how we're going to invest in it. But I believe it's still important to put it in place. There's two kinds of investments into that compensation structure. There's the investment that puts every single staff member in the cell where they're supposed to be. And then there's also the investment that gives everybody a bump every single year. And I think it's really important to look at those two things and we may have to slow down how quickly we're able to put everyone into the cell they're supposed to be or we'll have to slow down how much we bump everybody every year. What I would not want to do is put us in a situation where we end up in a pay freeze. And I think there are strategic ways to look right now and look forward to avoid a situation where we have to put people on a pay freeze. I think that is something that we should absolutely work to avoid. Pay freezes are not good. So I think we just have to look strategically, again, at those two pieces. How quickly can we put everyone in the cell they're supposed to be in? And then how can we bump everybody a little bit each year? And look at those two pieces and balance those out. The numbers that you've seen that kind of have you falling off a cliff in two years are, involve investing pretty quickly. So again, we just need to look at that investment. We also are fortunate that our state is investing more in education than they traditionally have, and that's super helpful. It doesn't help us be more competitive because the other guys get it too, but it does help us, it does at least help us begin to invest into that pay structure. But I think putting that pay structure in place is incredibly important because our teachers need something they can see, they can understand, and they can rely on as they move forward and as they come into this district.
Okay, this is your time to ask any questions you may have of directors or the Board of Education.
Thank you for the opportunity to be able to do that. What I would like to know from each of you is what you think your top two priorities would be for our district as we move forward. And what I mean by that really, what keeps you up at night, right? We all lay awake at night worrying about our people and our kids. So what keeps you up at night for each of you? I'd very much like to be able to hear that.
And we can just start at the end with Director Meek and we'll just go right down.
The benefit of being on the end. All right. So if I have to pick two, I guess I would say the compensation, figuring out the compensation that has been a huge challenge for this district because of past practices of boards. And I guess second is figuring out climate and culture for our district. And that goes into the whole divided community that we talked about, but it's also much larger with how do we create an environment of stability? Because without stability, you cannot have innovation. Your teachers are not willing to risk what they need to risk to push us forward. And we have this national narrative out there that we are trying to address, which has made us being effective more and more difficult. And I think the climate and culture so that we can actually achieve what we need to achieve for students.
Well, currently what's keeping me up at night is filling this superintendent position and just to address the elephant in the room. I had a cat go rogue on my face last night, so that's why there's a giant Band-Aid on me. I promise we didn't get in a fight during an executive session or anything. But seriously, I think my priorities are our teachers. There's a lot of unrest right now among them and I think it comes more to just compensation to keep our teachers. We do, I agree, have great teachers and we want to retain them and we want to bring in more great teachers. But it's also just the culture and having that stability and feeling like they're supported from up top. And then another one of my priorities is just getting back to academic success. I mean, I wouldn't say we're away from academic success, but get back to that credited with distinction that we used to have when I grew up here in Douglas County. And I think a lot of that starts with the primary ages and getting our kids to be comfortable reading and supporting our special needs kit, our kids with special needs. And yeah, that's where I think we stand.
Gosh, for me, it's trust, right? So it's trust everywhere, not just from us to the superintendent, but just the community at large to trusting the board, the decisions that we're making, trusting the teachers, like just creating a culture where we know that we're all doing what we think is best for our kids. So I think that that's the number one thing that's keeping me up at night. But then also just getting back to making sure our teachers are taken care of. And that's culturally, obviously, but then also this compensation plan and trying to figure out a way to make that happen in November with the first portion of trust not being there. So that's it.
Yeah, my first one is why I asked the question around bond mill and funding to go and put a system into place and then hope you have funding to catch up to it later. It's going to be difficult to navigate, but I agree with your position. It's something we owe to our teachers. It's the right thing to do and we'll figure out how to navigate it one way or the other. The second one is actually literacy. Had some of those immersive presentations that you talked about and some statistics really stuck with me. And the one that really stuck with me the most is at the third grade benchmark, if we have children that are not reading at grade level at third grade, 75% of those children go on to never read at grade level throughout the system. And when we talk about academic growth and achievement, the cornerstone of that entire system is literacy. So not just literacy in general, but specifically, we just adopted as the board, three new reading curriculum. We have two benchmarks, programs, and wonders. And the amount of professional development support and focus and just going back, the science of reading and evidence-based strategies is not something that a teacher that has been in the classroom for a significant period of time may have actually been trained in. We had the Read Act passed in 2012. So these are some of the things that I think we absolutely have to get right. Very strong focus on the early literacy, not to discard our other learners in later grades. But if we get that right, we should see a cohort of students with advanced metrics and literacy that follow them as a cohort all the way through graduation and sets them up for those tracks, post-secondary, vocational, military service, and others. So that is the second part and it is just foundational to what we do as an education department.
As I pondered this question again last night, I think as a retired teacher, I believe that teachers want to walk into the building every day and do what they signed up to do is to teach. And so, they want their leaders to value them, from the principal leadership all the way up to this building. And they also want to know that the school board is taking their best interest and wanting to make sure that they're compensated, that they're not overworking. Because as I went through my years of teaching, I did feel, and I think many teachers feel that today, I have a daughter that's a teacher, I have a neighbor that's a teacher, they just have so much that they have to do. And I see that it's sometimes taking away from their actual teaching. And then of course, to care about the kids. Make sure that when parents drop their kids off, they're trusting that when they go in the building, they're safe. And when they pick them up at the end of the day, what did you learn today? Can you tell me something that went on today? Maybe you're high, maybe you're low, but those are what's important. Let's just get back to some of those basic, common sense things.
Yeah, I appreciate the question yesterday that when you asked us because it has caused regular reflection for me as well. And I think I would echo many of the things that have been said. I think first and foremost is that notion of retaining our employees. You know, you read off some statistics from years gone by and I'll tell you, I'm very fearful. What's happened in the last couple of weeks, our employees are asking, is this the right place for me? That they're not feeling like they're in a stable work environment. And that worries me greatly because I lived through the times that you lived through when we saw the turnover. So I'm very, very concerned. And I do think it goes beyond compensation and benefits. It really is about my work environment. It's, do I work in a risk-free environment? Because of this national movement, our teachers are fearful. They're fearful because everything's under scrutiny. You know, we hear the national movement to put your lesson plans online. You know, if you say one word in the wrong way, all of a sudden you've got a parent at your door saying, you know, get rid of this teacher. And so, for me, I'm desperately concerned about the conditions that our employees are working under. And it goes beyond compensation. How do we value them? How do we ensure that it is indeed a risk-free environment? I think the other piece, and it kind of goes along with culture and climate, is mental wellness. You know, we've seen and we've heard the crisis, you know, having the pleasure to be a liaison for the Student Advisory Group. We hear firsthand from our students about their worries, their anxiety. We live in an unstable world, a chaotic world. And I think our students need to have some kind of reassurance that they're safe, that they're secure, that we're all rallying for them. So I think, you know, my concern certainly is that there's this narrative around social emotional learning. I think you called it social capital, Erin, which I, that's an interesting term. I hadn't really thought about social capital before. But I think we hear so many people criticizing social emotional learning, saying, well, that's not the place of the school. Well, my goodness, it is what school's all about. It's raising healthy children, healthy emotionally strong individuals. And so, I worry because of the narrative that that's going to be the next thing that gets scrutinized to a point where we lose sight and we think the only thing that kids need to do is be literate. Well, I'll stand on that bandwagon as well. I definitely believe, just like Director Peterson, that the science-based literacy makes a lot of sense. And that's a worry of mine because we've invested, prior to this board, we invested in really making sure there's some systemic things that happen in our district so that no matter what roof your child is under, you can be guaranteed they're going to get quality instruction. And so, I worry that we go back to, you know, the 91 silos that just, you know, decide to do it on their own without recognizing that they're actually a, that we're a school system. We're not a system of schools, we're a school system. And our kids ought to be able to have some things that are guaranteed. So I think, I think those are the things that I lose sleep over is the mental wellness and retaining all our quality employees.
I appreciate the opportunity to go last. I have a pretty solid rotation of things I worry about. I don't think I've slept since the day I was sworn in. It has been a roller coaster of challenges and just crisis after crisis. Like I said, I agree with everything that has been identified. And I think if I had to say one thing, my biggest concern right now is for our employees. I have always said from the very beginning that I firmly believe that what we are able to offer our employees is in turn what our students receive. And right now, our employees are suffering. And I understand the importance of literacy. I understand the importance of all of the academic things that we all have as a priority. And it gravely concerns me of how we get from point A to point B when we don't have the staff. I'm afraid we're not even going to have the numbers. A lot of the A lot of the things that we want to accomplish take humans, humans that feel valued. And I'm just not sure that we're there right now as a district.
Thank you for that. I really would love the opportunity to talk for a moment about climate and culture. I'm incredibly passionate about climate and culture. I always have been. It was my number one priority in 2016 when I came into the school district at that time. And as a result, we were able to, we had massive turnover, and we were able to greatly reduce it. I think when any individual, but particularly our teachers, feel the sands moving beneath their feet at all times, they are already worried about, am I delivering lessons to my kids? Am I taking care of my kids? They have a million worries already. And when the sands are shifting underneath their feet, that's incredibly scary. And for school leaders, when the sands are shifting under their feet, that makes it really hard for them to be able to keep the sand from shifting under their teachers' feet, right? It all, it all comes down from the top. I think the number one thing that we need to do in terms of climate and culture is communicate very strongly that we were going to make those sands stop shifting. And really being able to talk about, here are the expectations on how we're going to treat each other. I will tell all teachers right now, please don't be afraid. We, yes, we have, we have a lot of dialogue with parents, but it needs to stay on the respectful dialogue level. There is nuance in everything. Nobody is talking about anything that is black or white. I can't imagine talking about changing how teachers do their amazing work in terms of teaching history or anything else that they're teaching. I think that we do need to have conversations with our parents, but those should be kind and respectful conversations. I will be the first to stand up for a teacher if they are feeling threatened or being disrespected, because that's not okay. And we want to make sure our employees know that we are going to take care of them. But we just want to be able to have some respectful dialogue where we're able to listen to each other. And that's another commitment I will make. I will always listen. I will always listen to our employees. I will always listen to our leaders and do my best to work to understand and to work to keep those sands from shifting. I think we need to build a culture where mistakes are okay. It turns out we all make them. Mistakes are something that everyone does. And if we're terrified of a culture that's based on who's to blame, then we're terrified of making mistakes, and then we won't take risks. And we need people to take risks. We need people to take risks when they're taking care of our kids. We need leaders to not be afraid to take risks. They need to know that someone is up there willing to take a bullet for them. And that is the role that I consider this role being, is to communicate that it is okay to make a mistake, and it's okay to take a risk. And if you get in trouble, I'm going to come take a bullet for you as long as you keep working diligently and genuinely to do what is best for our children and our staff. I think that's incredibly important. In my organization at American Academy, since I have left the district, our turnover has remained at seven to eight percent at our teacher level. My organization does not feel the sands shifting under their feet, not even during COVID. And I think anyone could ask any one of my teachers or my school principals how they have felt about the executive leadership level and what that has provided in terms of stability and in terms of an incredible working environment. I agree that without an incredible working environment, everything else is just a hope and a dream. We have to be able to have an incredible working environment for our teachers and our kids. I'd also like to be able to address the scientific, science-based literacy instruction and evidence-based literacy. That's something I'm really passionate about. In terms of turning our school system into a bunch of silos, that's not something that I would support. I think that we really do need to look at a K through 12 system while we empower the people within that system to do what they know is best. But we absolutely need to keep in mind that our kids are on a K-12 trajectory. I'm personally taking the Read Act training that our teachers are being required to take. I'm about halfway through. I found it absolutely fascinating. I'm taking it with my daughter, who is so close to being a teacher and has been dreaming of being a teacher her whole life. And I could not be more proud. And I'm very, very passionate about that as well. I'm always passionate about doing things with evidence-based and scientifically-based practices. But that climate and culture piece is incredibly important. And that would be, that is something I'm known for at American Academy. I believe it was something I was known for when I was interim superintendent here in this district. And it is something that I would absolutely dedicate myself to, bringing us all to the middle, where it turns out most of us actually are.
Do you have any final questions for the board or for individual directors?
I do not have any final questions. I do just want to make a last pitch. I did lead this actual school district for two years, so I have that experience and a proven track record of running this district. That includes hard data in terms of our approval and improvement in academics, improvement in turnover, improvement in climate and culture, and improvement in our finances. I have always focused on providing an environment of excellence, an environment of high expectations, and an environment that's led by a large heart. I believe in taking care of all of the people that are in this district and taking care so that they can be empowered to take care of our kids. That is something, I've always had a heart for this district and for this staff. I have knowledge of this district, having led it for two years, having been in it since 2004, having been watching. I have incredible depth, deep knowledge of everything from our transportation operations, how our finances work, what our financial situation is. I should have mentioned, I do believe our financial situation is amazing. It is a lot better than it was when I came into this district in 2016. And I do think there is room to invest in that teacher salary structure. I believe there is room to invest in that teacher salary structure right now. And I think that we should, and I think it would be an incredible message to our teachers. I have always been known for leading with transparency and clarity. I'm not afraid to make decisions, and I'm not afraid to take responsibility if I make a mistake, because we all do, as it turns out. I have a great understanding of our current issues and priorities. And most importantly, as we look at a bond mill potentially in 2022, I have prepared for one of those before. I am fully ready to hit the ground running and head in that direction. And in fact, as I said, I have actually been pitching funding in this school district, even during the time that I wasn't in this, in the interim superintendent role. And finally, Douglas County and this school district means the world to me. The people in this district still mean the world to me. I still know so many of them and care about everyone in this school district. It would be an incredible privilege to be able to return and have the opportunity to return our district to sanity and stability and a place where people love to work and love to go to school. And I think that is our number one priority. So thank you so much. I really, really appreciate your time, and I appreciate all your energy as we go through this process.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kane. At this point, without exception, we will take a recess until 1:30, at which point we will proceed with our next finalist.
With our interviews and now we have Mr. Danny Windsor. Hi Danny, how are you?
Hey, good afternoon, I believe it is, so it's good to see you.
Yes, good afternoon and just like the previous finalist, we'll give you a little bit of time just in the beginning to talk about yourself and your history with the district. We'll go through questions from each director, there may be a follow-up or two. Generally, we're targeting about an hour, don't have to hold yourself to that, just as a general target. And you will have time at the end, as you did during the other day, to ask any questions you have of the board or individual members, and then make a closing statement. So, any questions before we get started?
Not at all, thank you.
Alright, so let's just go ahead and start off and please tell us about yourself and your history with the district.
Well, first of all, thank you for making the time and actually thank you for the ability to be here today. Obviously, I'm very proud to be a part of this process and very proud to be a part of this district. I've been a part of this district, one directly as an employee, back when I opened up Legend High School back in 2007, a part of the core team that was there. So, close to 15 years within the district. But I also say I've been unaffiliated with the district prior to that, knowing that my mom was a German and French teacher, a part of this district at Pandrosa High School, Parker Vista, opened up Sagewood Middle School. And so, unaffiliated-wise, been a part of this district for a very long time. In my roles within this district, I've been very fortunate enough to be a counselor in this district, as well as an assistant principal, as well at the high school level, a principal at the middle school level at Sagewood Middle School, the Director of Choice Programming, where I got to work with our charter schools, as well as choice programming and open enrollment for the district. And then, most recently, as the Executive Director of Schools for Parker Schools, where I also get to oversee our Director of Choice Programming and all of post-secondary readiness for the district. So, that is a literal aspect of my connection to Douglas County schools. But most importantly is I'm a dad in this district as well, too. I have three amazing kiddos in this district, two at Parker Core Knowledge and one at Simran. And have had a chance, they've started from day one. And as a matter of fact, even I think the day after they're born, I believe, I had Will out at the soccer field with me as I was coaching, in one hand, and coaching the kids on the other hand. And so, this place has been just a special place for myself, as well as my family. My wife is also an administrator in this district at Castleview High School. And this has just been our community. And I have just been so lucky to see this district just be a part of my life for a very long time. And being a part of that, in my current role, but also as a parent, is something that I am very fortunate to be a part of and just excited about being here.
Hey, thank you, Director Myers, if you'd start.
Well, good afternoon again, Mr. Windsor, how are you?
Feeling well, thank you.
Please define the roles of parents, teachers, administrators, and the school board in the education of a student. And as you think about that, as a superintendent, how do you see these roles working together?
Well, my first initial reaction is they have to all work together. I don't think there's a question of looking at those separately for our students to be successful. Our first and foremost priority as a district, I'm gonna take this off because I'm not a fan of leaning in, if that's okay, is, I think, first and foremost, when we look at the connections between our families, our students, and our teachers, is really looking at what the ultimate priority of our work is. And that's for students to be successful, and that's through investing in our teachers and investing in our families. And as a superintendent, we need to make sure that each of our stakeholders in particular feels invested in and feels heard. And that can't be done in a random fashion. I am a very systems-oriented individual, where I really want to ensure that when you look at a system as large as ours, with 64,000 students, 8,000 employees, you really have to have a systems approach to this work, especially with the level of autonomy that I think we've seen in this district in the last 15 years that I've been a part of it as well. So, as a superintendent, I think it's really important that we all understand what we're working towards. And I think that's a very key part of the work that I will be very candid in the sense to say, I'm not sure if we've spent the amount of time on that, around the outcomes side of things. I think we spend a lot of times talking about the how of things, but not necessarily so much about the outcomes and truly having a collective understanding what each of our roles and responsibilities is in that work. And so, when we look at that work, whether it's priority student outcomes, priority learning outcomes for our students and for our staff, is we've done a lot of work in that, I think, over the last couple of years in particular, around our strategic plan work. Having been a part of that, helping facilitate some of that work, I've been, I was really excited to see our student voice that was in that process, very excited about our parent voice and our staff voice, and getting that across our region, our regions. When we talk about 800 square miles of this district, there are definitely some distinct needs, not only from building to building, but also different within our region as well. And as a superintendent, you have to be mindful of understanding that you're soliciting impact, not necessarily just from the loudest, but ensuring that those have multiple mediums to be able to give feedback as well. And I think that's a really important process. It can't be waiting for folks to come down here to give us comment. It has to be about us making direct connections with our schools and with our families. As a former school principal, it was my greatest responsibility to make sure I connected with every single one of my kids, every day. I also felt it was my responsibility to connect with every one of my families and be accessible for our families. And I think that comes with some of the expectation a superintendent has for its staff, is making sure that our staff is accessible for our families. Where things typically don't go well is when something is held over and doesn't feel like they're being heard and being enacted upon. And so, for us, we need to make sure at the most immediate level, we are being accessible for our students and for our families. And then, we have clear systems around what that is. As a former building principal, that was one area that I really wanted to be intentional in, whether it was coffee with a principal and building in times that, to ensuring that there is accessibility of offering SAC times at different times throughout the year, so different families could be a part of that process. It was allowing folks virtually to be a part of that process. It was also giving people different feedback mechanisms through email or direct conversations. And I think as a superintendent, you need to make sure that you are providing the opportunity for all individuals to give feedback, and you can't just do it in one way. And I think that's the important part of that process. And at the same time, people need to know what they're working towards. Ultimately, and I wholeheartedly believe this, people want to do what's right, as long as they know what they're also working towards and what their role and responsibility is in that work. And getting to work with students, our students, I think, are our most honest individuals we will find in our district, and that's who ultimately want to make sure we have a direct impact on. And so, we have to have clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities we have to make sure student voice is an active part of this process.
Guys, a follow-up on this question? Okay, just moving into the next one, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, guys, Director Hanson.
Yesterday, we had a great opportunity to talk about special education, and I would like to continue that conversation now.
Great.
I feel like it's so important. Is that better?
There we go. Awesome.
So, I would just like to start with a general question of how you would define...
I don't think it's work.
Oh, okay. How you would define an exemplary special education program for PK through 12 students and families?
I appreciate that conversation. I think also the background of being in mental health for a good majority of my career, this was an area about how do we advocate for each student? And also then, as a, what I believe my responsibility as a superintendent to be is the lead learner and the lead instructional leader of this district. And I think that's a skill set that you absolutely need to have in this process to build trust and capacity, I think, within our system. And that's something that I've been very fortunate enough to engage in a lot of learning around that work. When I think specifically around special education, I really think about the continuum of learning, to be quite honest with you. And I think too often, we try to navigate the special education idea when it gets to the most intensive services and try to fix things in that area, when realistically, it needs to be about the continuum of learning and meeting the continuous needs of students. And that's obviously done through different processes from our MTSS process and MTSS framework that we have, and really making sure we have a preventative approach to do this work. And at the same time, I also think there's this layered approach of professional learning communities within our schools. I think professional learning communities is one of the best approaches to ensure that as we move through those spectrum of services that are needed for students, that we are providing the spectrum of services and supports we are for our students. And that means, one, we need to make sure each student feels like they have an advocate in this process. And that means, we need to take off things off teachers' plates to make sure they know kids. And I think they are our first line of making sure we connect with our kids. So, as we work through that process of special education, identified needs are there and services are needed, then we have a continuum, the story that is needed to support that student. And so, when I look at that process, I think it's that integrated approach. And that means, we need to ensure that we understand how we support students when it goes through that and you get to the team teaching side of things, where a student is potentially staffed in to special education. What are we doing on the front end to ensure that we've invested in high-quality professional learning for our teachers in that process? And that means, in the spectrum of services, we're doing high-quality professional learning and professional learning communities. It also means in high-yield instructional strategies. It also means wraparound supports with our mental health teams to be able to support students. And so, when you look at what our special education needs, it's talking about the integrated services we provide for our students. And so, when we look at hiring for a role of a special education services officer, is what's that connection with learning and student services? We cannot look at special education in isolation while also knowing there are certain federal mandates we need to be in compliance with. One of the greatest concerns I have, Director Hanson in particular, is about trying to staff special education. That is a huge concern for me. And that's not only just from special education, it's teaching shortages in general, which I think has a direct impact on the sense of the spectrum of services we can provide students. So, when you look at kind of that integrative-based approach, is what are we doing with our center-based programming teachers and providing proactive-based services at the beginning of the year? What is it we're doing with our moderate-needs-based teachers and providing support services that are there? What are we doing around developing an academic language for learning expectations for us as a district? Is what we need to spend significant time on. So, when we talk about what learning is, we have a common understanding of what learning is. We want to provide intervention, support, we have an understanding of what that level of service really is.
As a follow-up, what does implementation look like for you? I know you're a systems person, but if you can just explain in more detail how we take the vision to the reality?
Yeah, I think it's one of the things that I think where you see sometimes school districts fail, is you have great ideas and poor implementation plans. And I think one of the things we have to be mindful of is understanding that implementation process. When you take this larger level view of what we view special education is and this integrated approach, how are we providing intentional systems within our district, such as training administrators and leaders within the district, training our teachers specifically in general education classrooms and special education classrooms, talking about what do we do around the wraparound services for the MTSS process and understanding the family involvement in that process? One of the things that I think sometimes our families are really asking for is more information and tell me what my role and responsibility is to be able to support my student. So, how are we providing transparent communication with our community around what roles and responsibilities are in this? And so, people will try to do their best to support students. And so, a lot of it has to do with, one, understanding the really couple of key things and outcomes we're looking at. How do we provide systematic professional learning opportunities at each one of our stakeholder levels? And that includes our students also understanding what that process is. Too often, we walk into special education meetings and you read rights and responsibilities and you get the deadpan look of what the heck did you just say to me? And we want to make sure that is clearly understood, what that means and what the rights are of our students and our families are to support our students. And so, I think a lot of that training, I think, is something we need to proactively provide within our system. I think it also means we need to recruit and retain great teachers to stay within our classrooms. And that includes special education teachers, mental health, classified-based staff. I'll tell you how many unfilled EAs that we have within our schools is something that, quite honestly, scares me. And I know I probably shouldn't be saying stuff that in public, but I'll be just very transparent, it is. Because we need to make sure our EAs are a huge support in our success of our special education programming. And so, we need to really be mindful of how we're investing in, looking at how we're paying our employees, I think is a huge part of this work, when we look at our salary schedule. That will help us in this process as well, and that's at larger level system. And as a superintendent, you have to be very mindful of those things, because we can do all the training in the world, but if you have staff turning over year over year, that training is going to go support other districts versus staying in Douglas County. Thank you.
Follow-up? Yep, follow-up from Director Ray.
Maintain a standardized, because I asked this question previously to, you know, Mr. Windsor, we mentioned earlier just the devastating loss of our special education services officer, especially to our community that has students with special needs. And this board, for the past four years, has been very committed to really rebuilding some trust with our parents who have students with special needs. And so, I'm wondering, from your knowledge and perspective of listening to parents, certainly as an EDOs, you've been out there, close to parents and students. What are you hearing? What do you believe when you hear the themes from them in terms of their concerns of special education services? What are the themes that you're hearing that are their concerns?
And I think there's some themes, and then there's a multitude of things I'm also hearing beyond just the themes. And I think each is equally as important. And I think part of one of my role needs to be is spending time with some of our, with DCCAC and getting further information around what are those particular themes? The things I'm absolutely hearing is, one, is staff turnover is one that I'm hearing, and knowing that I have a high-quality staff member that's in front of my student to support my student. I think it's also the understanding of writing high-quality IEPs and the communication process in particular around supporting students, not only at a current level, but when you talk about the transition from a student from a level to another level, and what are those needs and resources? I also think it's about the unified systems around how we provide instructional services and expectations for our students from classroom to classroom, from school to school, knowing that there needs to be a level of expectation of services we're providing our students in particular. I think it's about the mental health-based supports, knowing that we've had such shortages in school psychologists and social workers. And in that same breath, is when you have a changing process, there's a disconnect of communication and sometimes feeling like there's a disconnect of investment in what we are doing. Obviously, with special education, one of the greatest challenges, there's a lot of unfunded mandates. And as a district, how are we specifically allocating resources while understanding the concept of maintenance of effort, which is a big part of this work and what we can sustain financially to provide? Because the challenge when you're in a, when the, in a stable to decreasing enrollment as a district and understanding what maintenance of effort is, there's a concern there, might, something you have to be mindful of around what those services are for our students and what we can and can't provide. And the last thing I want any family to feel, and more importantly, any student to feel, is that they're receiving something less than the education they deserve. And I think we have to ensure that, one, they understand clearly what those commitments are to our students from our schools and our teachers. And then, at the same time, what are, as a parent, what can they do to be able to support the process as well?
Director Williams?
Hi, thanks for being here.
Yeah, hi, thanks.
So, what does keeping our kids safe mean to you? And how would you improve safety, or what opportunities do you see, if any?
You know, safety, I think, is something that I think about constantly as a former leader and as a current leader in this district, is when a kid walks into a building, if they don't feel safe, they can't learn. At the first and foremost. And one of the things we need to do is there's a physical safety side of things of what you're providing as a building. And then, there's also the mental health in connections and belongingness a student feels when they walk in their school. The first thing a student needs to do is feel safe, is to feel like they have connections and relationships within the building with an adult and with other students. If a student feels like they have that connection with an adult, it changes the dynamic of saying, you know what, I know somebody's here to advocate for me. We need to make sure there are advocates for students in our buildings. And I think that's extremely important in that process. So, when you look at safety, I think it's about making sure there's wraparound supports. You know, something that I advocated for way back in our 2018 bond and bill. You know, something that I advocated for way back in our 2018 bond and bill, and I said it till I was red in the face, that was there is we needed to make sure our ratios for our counselors was 1 to 250. From that National Aska model about ensuring that our staff knows our students, our counselors know our students, and how do we develop a true comprehensive counseling and preventative model to support our students is extremely important in that process. However, we know one of the greatest things that we need to provide is, again, as alluding to Director Hanson's questions before, is our teachers are our best line of making connections with students, and we need to be able to provide them those opportunities to connect with students. When we talk about prevention and safety in a school, it's students willing to go to an adult to say, I'm concerned about another individual, or I'm concerned about not knowing what to do as a student. The work we've tried to do in a district around sources of strength, emergent ethics, a variety of different programming to give kids emotional, social, emotional language is extremely important. I think as a kid, I had three words I understood around emotion, happy, sad, and mad. I knew nothing in between that was there. And I had a chance to sit at a podcast with some around middle school students just the other day to talk about it, and I heard the language that our students had around their emotionality. And it is just amazing to me that at the age of 12, 13, 14, how much more advanced they were than myself at that age. I just didn't know. And so their ability to articulate where they are is important. And one of the most important aspects of safety is when students walk into the building, they are walking the building as their whole self. A student cannot walk into a building and feel like I am only cared for from a particular lens where I can't bring my whole experience to the table. And I think it's important to see students for who they are, invest in students who they are, and make sure we systemically do that. I said my favorite thing that I did as a middle school leader was sitting outside and being in car line. That was my absolute favorite thing I could do. And I mentioned it to you just the other day of every day out of car line, I will absolutely make eye contact with kids, even if that means getting on my knees, staring up because they're trying to stare at the ground and not see us, is to say, hey, and know their first name. I'll always say I studied the life touchbook of every kid that walked in there, so I knew their first name. And when a kid knows you know them, that is one of the most important things you can do. I'll also say from a physical safety side of things, our partnerships with our community is extremely important, and that's with our law enforcement partners, is something we need to continue to invest in around that connection with law enforcement around the safety and creating true response-based practices to be able to support our schools as well. And that's from things such as reunification drills we need to have to regular drills we're practicing in our building because our students need to know what to do in those scenarios that are there. So we need to have clear understandings and processes around that because our students need to be heard. And then lastly, I think in this process is our students need to feel like they belong, and that means being a part of clubs, sports, activities, a teacher, electives, whatever that may be. Because when students are at their best and are connected to their passions, that's huge. And when we have 89 schools and talk about what school choices in our building, when a student feels like a school is right for them, there's a different connection and ownership that kids have. One of the best things that I saw when I was doing a recent interview process over at Ponderosa High School, there was a student who was maybe not making the best of all choices, and the best part about it is I heard a student walk up behind and saying, you know what, hey, we don't do that here. That sense of ownership and that sense talks about safety, belongingness for kids, is about students feeling ownership in their building and making sure that each school feels like a community school where our parents feel welcome in our schools as well.
Director Meek.
Good afternoon, Ms. Windsor.
Good afternoon.
So you've already talked about elevating student voice a little bit, and I'm going to ask you to expand on that a little bit. So as you know, our district's mission is to provide that educational foundation where every student can reach their full potential. So students have the greatest stake in their own education, and their engagement is essential for us to be successful in what we're doing in our schools. So could you please provide specific examples of how you have in the past and will in the future include work to elevate that student voice and decision-making for the school district?
Yeah. I'll start at an immediate in-school level. I think when you walk into any of our schools, and I would even say when you walk into any of our communities, when you see students wearing their school apparel, you know, that is there, there's no better feeling that is there. And there's no better feeling when I walk into a restaurant and I, hey, hey, Windsor, or, you know, in there, and they know that there's that personal connection that is there, and they feel like they have that relationship with you. When I think about student voice, when I was, I'll give an example of that, at Sagewood in particular, was when I had a chance to walk in that building, I really wanted to make sure Sagewood felt like a, not a drop-off pickup school. And that was not an area where parents saying, you know what, I'll drop off my kid, I'll pick up my kid, and I'm good to go. I really wanted to get to that place where there was a community-based school where students felt welcome in the building, staff felt they had ownership in that building, and our families felt they had ownership in that building. And so one of the things we wanted to do was to see what was that ownership level look like, you know, currently? And that was meaning, needing that we needed to provide, was it clubs, sports, activities, elective-based programming, access to schedule, whatever that may be? What were they wanting, I think, within our building? And so one of the first things that I did as a principal was create a principal advisory group of students with diverse experiences within our building. And I wanted to hear where are we at as a school? What are we doing well? What are we not doing well? Then how do we work on this together to create not just event-based community development, but about developing this culture of belongingness and culture of student voice within our building? And so we tasked ourselves with some really challenging questions about how to develop community and student voice, which led to this idea of writing a course, in a student government course, where we were the first middle school to have a student government course, where they led all of our spirit-based days identifying particular needs within our building, which then really was about then trying to make greater connections with our parents to be visible within our schools. And we went from having very limited SAC support my first year and PTO support from going basically one to 20 or 30 every regular meeting that was there. And so you had staff, you had staff, students, and families really having active voice. We were building things like master schedule. We wanted master schedule to be based off of student requests. I know that may seem very minimal that is there, but one of the areas is, is why should I choose your electos for you? Why is that not something that a student should have a voice in what their educational passions are? And so it was about making those adjustments around student requests at a building level. And so having that student voice around defining what programming looked like, defining what student engagement and event-based programming, we created a family theater carnival for the entire Ponderosa Theater and had 1,500 folks show up the first time, which was unreal when you looked at the parking lot. And I apologize to Douglas County Sheriff's for the parking that occurred during those events as well, too, and we did try to coordinate with that, so sorry about that. But, you know, it's creating those nights. It was community, community nights that we had families come in, that students were helping be a part of that process. And so when I look at that at a larger level, that's there, is how do we really make sure in the student voice that students have the ability to tap into their passions and what they want? And as we've talked about, our pathway programming-based work is how did we elevate that and make sure students really felt like they had a voice to develop, you know, and enhance these pathway programs for students? Too often, I remember students were saying, gosh, I so look forward to this one class that I get to take in my four-year career at the high school level. And that absolutely disheartened me to the greatest level because students, when they were done with that, what was the rest of the experience like for our kids? And so really, how do we ensure as we're building master scheduling, allocating resources for our students? Because sometimes our students may not feel like they have the voice, so how do we create other opportunities for students to have voice at the most immediate and local level in our schools and really set the expectation from myself as the superintendent to ensure that we are providing not those unique opportunities at one out of 89 schools, is how do we do that across all schools and that being a clear expectation for us? I had a chance to sit down with our SAG kiddos as we were building and developing the innovation campus that was there and gave us really clear feedback on what pathway programming was. And so I think there's absolutely student groups at a district level, but I also need to invest in our principals and our teachers to get student voice in that process. And so that's one of my, I will probably say, one of my top three values that's there is how do I make sure, number one, our students feel like they have ownership in their school and have voice and can help lead us in the right direction?
Director Wanniger.
Thanks for being here today, Mr. Windsor.
Thank you.
How will you build and maintain trust and partnerships among employees within DCSD and between DCSD and the community at large?
To do the work that we need to set out to do is trust has to be the foundation of all that we do. And that includes, one, the ability to build and make connections and relationships with our staff, our community, and our students. Over the last 15 years, being a part of this district, I've had a chance to be a part of a variety of roles within our district. And from a very humble standpoint, I've had a chance to build some really good connections among this district for the past 15 years. And we could really feel like I could leverage those conversations and relationships to really make sure they're a part of this process and defining about how we are moving forward as a district. When we build that process of, one, making connections and relationship with our staff and also ensuring that I'm accessible to our staff, accessible to our students, accessible to our families, is extremely important. And the accessibility can't be around when there was a problem, then I become accessible. So how do I proactively make myself accessible to our community? Some of the work I've been doing in our post-secondary readiness work is how do we create the vision of this work when there was no vision before? And one of the things I feel like I constantly love to stretch ourselves is to making sure we're making connections with our community stakeholders, with students and without students in this district as well. Douglas County School District needs to be a community school district, and you have to systemically approach to do that. And that means I need to be able to hear the hard things about that are not going well in this district, and I also need to hear the things that are going well and building upon those things. To build trust, though, you need to know what you're working towards. When people feel like there's a moving target is when they lose trust. When we clearly identify clear, obtainable targets, and I'm going to challenge us as a district to simplify what we are working towards, there are too many things we're trying to do. And I think we need to really focus ourselves on really understanding clearly what those outcomes we're trying to achieve and focus ourselves and look at that over a period of time. In our strategic plan, I think we have some great themes and great work that we've identified and really gathered some great input from our community that are part of these action teams. And I think we need to revisit those because we are in a different place than we were two years ago. So how do we ensure we establish some clear structures around that, which we already have as a district, that we're meeting with those action team leaders on a regular basis? Ms. Hyatt and her team are making that connection as well. But we need to know what we're working towards, and our families need to be a part of that process and giving feedback on that process. I know we did that work with our strategic plan, but my question to us is how do we continue to develop systems to get feedback in that, in that process? And at the same time, clearly understand the structures in which we're going to implement that work. Our strategic plan is great work. Our action plan is great work. And at the same time, is again, an implementation science that's there, is you can have great ideas, but you can fail miserably when it comes to implementation. And so we need to be really aware of implementation, but also understanding how to navigate the change that is in this, in this process as well, too. So I'm excited about making sure we set clear systems and getting that feedback, and that's how you build trust. And one of the things that I also think is important in this as well is, is trust is about not only seeing our students be successful in the K-12 system, but our success needs to be also around what are we preparing our kids for? Our families will trust us more if they are seeing their students be successful within our system and beyond our system. And we need to start understanding what that matriculation and persistency data is within our district. And I think those are things that we need to have clear monitoring reports to navigate as we go through this work because we can't say our graduation rates are the highest in all of schools and just be content with that. That is something that should be an expectation. I will also say we need to make sure that as we understand our students that are matriculating beyond here, we can't just track student data of those that are going into two-year or four-year-based schools. We need to understand those that are going to the military, those that are going into the workforce, and how do we navigate that conversation? And one of the, one of the parts of why we have developed so many CTE, and I would say high-quality CTE programs in this district, is one of the responsibilities you have is to track your student data a year after they graduate. That's a part of the work we do. And so when we've seen our CTE and CE program grow at the rates that it has during some most challenging times we've had as a district, our goal, if we know our outcome, we can achieve that. We've seen more teachers get credential than concurrent enrollment than we have over the last how many years, and yet we saw teacher loss. If we know what we're working towards, our teachers are committed to do that work, our families are committed to provide those opportunities. And I think our families are appreciating the fact that when they leave our schools, they're leaving with college credits, industry certifications, and that's each and every one of our students. Do I think we need more growth? I think in conversations we had, Director Peterson, around our special education students in particular in post-secondaryness, absolutely. And I think that's something that we can continue to build that trust with our community as well.
And just as a follow-up, for the portion between DCSD and the community, I'd like you to specifically discuss the role of what was known as the Wildlife Experience or CU South. Now we're calling it the Legacy Campus while we're waiting for official name. What role do you see that campus, and specifically the CTE component, building on your last comments, in building a bridge between DCSD and businesses and other community members?
I would say if we have the next three and a half hours, I would be game for that. I think with, with all sincerity, the thing we have to think about as a district is we can't just ask our industry partners just to give to us. We need to make sure it's a reciprocal relationship with our post-secondary partners and our industry partners. We know that there is a talent shortage that is leaving, you know, that is, that our industries are looking for. When you look at the greatest needs, some of the greatest needs within Douglas County in of itself around healthcare, hospitality in some of those areas, cybersecurity and IT, nursing and healthcare, all those areas are unbelievably important areas. And so when those pathways were developed, one of the things we really spend a lot of time on is a thing called talent pipeline management, is how did we create a clear talent pipeline to invest qualified, certified students to enter the workforce while in Douglas County and when they leave? We have industry partners that in from a CNA-based program where students are getting certified nursing assistants when they leave here, that our hospitals are absolutely in dire need of more certified nursing assistants in our, in our hospitals. And at the same time, you have hospitals that are willing to say, if you work for us as a CNA, we'll pay for your four-year degree in Bachelor's of Nursing. We know that that partnership is to ensure we are creating that talent pipeline. We also knew when we talk about the trades in particular is, one, in the Phase Two of programming, there's a significant shortage in our trades that are there. And one of the things we want to do as we get to Phase Two specifically around construction, HVAC, and electrical aspects is we need to make sure that, one, we are, we are training certified employees. And at the same time, why would this school or this campus not be a training ground for our industry folks to have their talent to be trained in that facility? This facility should be used 24 hours a day, you know, for the most part, to get our industry folks in that work and creating that talent pipeline for us. I absolutely thank our partners from CU, DU, and ACC in this process. We have created sublease agreements, in particular with CU, around that nursing program where they are going to be providing nurses for us to help teach our CNA programs. ACC is going to provide the curriculum for certified nursing assistants. What a great partnership for us to create that two-plus-two-plus-two programming for our community and our students to know that our students can go straight in and matriculate into that field. And our goal is to make sure that our industry folks, we just had about 150 CEOs in that building doing an economic development conversations in our campus about a month ago. We want to make sure we're investing in Douglas County, the community, and our district. But if we can create talent that stays within Douglas County, that is a huge benefit for us, which allows us to get to that community school district, that I think is so unbelievably important in that process. And I think our industry folks that are there, whether it was Mr. Liniger in helping in this process, that was there, to other industry partners, were absolutely instrumental in allowing us to create a systemic and sustainable way to create pathways for our kids.
Mr. Windsor, how would you navigate the polarization of political ideologies that exist in our community? And more specifically, what are your thoughts about the superintendent having associations with organizations that may trigger polarized reactions in our community?
The first and foremost thing that comes to mind is I think it's important to have each parent, I feel like they have a voice in this community. I think it's what makes Douglas County great, it was makes, without sounding corny as well, the United States an amazing place to live, is to people feel like they have an opportunity to give voice. The caveat that I will give to that, if it's done in detriment to intentionally harm an individual versus talking about a process or an outcome. And I think one of the things we have not probably spent the time on, and I will, I, one thing you will learn, I will just tell you as it is. And I think what's really important is this, is And I, I think what's really important is, is this, is we need to clearly better understand, understand what the problems we are working on, and it can't just be about the people, because we will not change that. But we need to clearly understand our process of working through this work to what we're trying to solve. I think at the core of our entire community, and you can tell me if I'm way off, the soul of this community wants to see our students be successful. I think we're getting stuck on how we all want it to look. And I think that's a huge part of my role as a superintendent, to ensure that, one, we clearly identify the problems that we're looking at. And I say this is with much love and admiration of the 70 that are sitting up there. The 70 represent the people of Douglas County School District. And you are one of the seven of those individuals in this community. And my job is to work for our community. My job is to work for our teachers. My job is to work for our students. I absolutely value your input, I think, in that process, and I value the collaboration that would occur. And at the same time, we need to clearly understand what we are working on and working towards. And I don't think any of you want to sustain any more personal tax as you go through this, because that is not going to help our district move forward. Douglas County School District is not about going back to what it was. It's about going forward to what it wants to become. And we clearly need to understand what those clear things are that we need to work on. And that means we all need to make a commitment on doing the best we can to service our students, period. And that means we need to understand what we are holding ourselves accountable to around those measures of success. It also means how are we going to systemically invest in our teachers to be successful? And that's about making sure that our, our, our staff is invested in with high-quality professional learning, with a clear focus, and that doesn't mean they have to do everything. That is the most frustrating thing in the world as a teacher. And I bet you know that from all hearing the messaging that is there is our teachers want to do and be at their best, period. And I think you want them to be at their best. It's my role to make sure that we establish clear structures and systems for them to be successful. And that means we need to know what we're working on. And that is something when we talk about the polarization that is there is that perspective of hearing from, and, and to me, I, I will say either side, and I'll be quite honest with you, the in-between is just as equally important in this process, not just the edges of the spectrum in that work, because we have 64,000 students and their families wanting their students to be successful. How do we make sure we're getting that voice in this process? And that means we need to make sure our schools are connected with our students and are connected with our families. That's going to help us at a significant level in talking about the polarity. When we come here, we need to see that transfer practice in our schools. I need to make sure that I'm creating an environment where students, staff and families feel like they can be successful. And that means our students are being successful. The conversation we haven't had to the nth degree that is there is what's, what are we, what are we even defining what student success is? If I had to ask each and every one of you, define what a successful graduate is Douglas County Schools, we better be crystal clear what that is. Because that then allows us to understand what we need to work on in particular in the monitoring reports that are around that. That's what I get excited about in this role. Affiliations, all those other things, it distracts us from what we're trying to focus on. If we keep engaging in every single response that is there, we will never solve a single thing, which means we will never have a positive impact on kids. That, to me, is, and I know for a fact, none of you up there want to see our students not be successful. That needs to be the conversation more than anything as we go through it. And I've sat through this process, sitting over at that table that is there, listening to every single word that has been said. And that is exactly the reason why I want to be sitting at this table, is to be a part of the solution. I love this district, period. I love our students, period. I love our staff, period. I love our family's commitment to this district, period. That's the commitment we need to have in this district. And I think too often we forget about the love that is in the work and focus on the hatred, and you can't solve solutions when hate is in the middle of everything. And I think ultimately, that's what we need to be able to focus on as a district. And that's my role in this work, is to ensure we clearly understand what we're working on. And I can assure you, this has been my entire life. I've always loved the challenge. That, to me, is something that has inspired me to say, if something is worth it, it's probably going to be hard. And I think we have a great opportunity amongst all of us to have that direct impact on kids. And I can't wait to have those conversations with our students, staff and our family members and community and post-secondary partners to do the right work.
And the final question, the board is scheduled to vote on a staff compensation and benefits package next week on Tuesday.
Yep.
We've been briefed by HR and finance that we have about a two-year runway. We do have sufficient funding to kick that off, put it in place, and we have about two years before things could turn bad. Describe what you believe your role will be in a successful passage of a mill levy override, should it be placed on the ballot, and how you would ensure sustainability of these programs if we do not achieve a mill levy override in the next two years?
You know, the work that I think our, one, I want to thank our, obviously, our HR and finance team. They have done an incredible amount of work. I was just talking to Mary Cheslow the other day. It's been 10 years since our predictable salary schedule has been away, which is surprising to me, was 10 years. I, in my head, I knew it, but I also didn't realize 10 years gone by. I think one of the things is we can talk about all those particular details that are there around a bond and mill. And at the same time, at the core of this work is does our community, our staff and our students trust us in this work? And if we don't get to a place where our staff believes that we're unified, working towards something, a bond and mill will never happen. And I think one of the things we have to do is have a very clear understanding of what we're working towards. We have done a significant amount of work as a district to understand the needs, not just the wants, the needs of what this district is, from capital improvement to operational needs that we have within this district. And as we know, the majority of our budget goes to the human resources of this district. Our teachers deserve this compensation package, period. And I'm excited about the opportunity. What's interesting is, I'm not sure how this is not such a bigger celebration that we have not been able to talk about, is about having this predictable salary schedule for our teachers. Our teachers have deserved this for obviously a very long time, and I would say even deserve more. And at the same time, we're limited in our resources. As a superintendent, I need to make sure that we have clear direction of where we're moving. And that means we have a unified voice coming from, from the seven of us that are in front of me to myself and the rest of our leadership team, staff buildings, as we move forward. And that's clearly understanding what those needs are and building those connections within our community. That is vital work as we go through this. And to build trust is not just something that you can say while sitting up here. This is something that actionably, we need to make sure we're making direct connections with our community around understanding what those needs are. I don't think there is a single individual that wants to see a teacher shortage in Douglas County School District. Do we need to paint the real story of what that is? Do I want to create dire, straight conversations? I have hesitations around doing that, but we do have a two-year window. I think one of the things that's been a challenge is, is why have we not created a routine fashion? We've gone out for bond and mills and people understanding what that is. As a superintendent, it's my responsibility to work with our staff to be able to create and make recommendations to our board around what that is and gather feedback from our board around what that routine structure is, so we're not in this scenario of where we currently are in this process. If we had to look at what worst-case scenarios are as a leader, that is something as I did every single year. I never, ever planned on best-case scenario, ever. And that's something that I think is important when you talk about fiscal responsibilities, that you always have multiple plans to ensure, you know, compromise of level of education we demand of ourselves to provide for our students. And one of the first and foremost ways we can do that is, again, recruit, retain our staff that is there. And I think it's really important we do that. I also think we need to continue to invest in different programming opportunities that are directly connected for our students' benefit. The work around asking for compensation is directly tied to programming. And I don't think we've told that narrative very well. We talk about recruiting and retaining teachers also means if we can't recruit and retain teachers for certain pathway programmings, current technical education won't exist at the level it is. Concurrent enrollment won't exist. Special education programming and services we want to provide will be unbelievably challenging for us to provide. It's the story that's attached to the finances that we need to be very crystal clear on with our community, because our community wants to see our students be successful. And that's not just in our district-operated schools. It's in our district authorized schools. The bond and mill work in particular is directly passed through through our charter schools, and that directly impacts our student success in our charter schools around that pass-through and our bond and mills. So this is not a district-operated versus district authorized conversation. This is about all 64,000 students having the equal opportunity to be successful. And so telling and painting that narrative is something that I think I would need to do and with my staff and with our schools to do that. I walked the streets in 2018 on a regular basis, knocking door-to-door with my son, Will and Izzy, knocking on the door, saying, hey, here's the level of importance in this work. And I don't do that without a lot of thought in that process, being a taxpayer in this community myself as well. And at the same time, one of the best ways to invest in our community is to invest in our students, invest in our families, and invest in the economic development of our community as well, which is through our students. And there's a direct connection to that. When we talk about 70% of our families not having students in this county, we need to clearly understand what that benefit is for our 70%. And that talks to post-secondary partners, industry partners. One of the things I didn't mention is we are going to be offering advanced-based degree programming, masters, PhD programs, boot camps for our industry partners not connected to our programs to come in and get certified in things like GIS and things like that that may need it in surrounding industry. Those are the things we need to try to find ways to invest in our community and otherwise. And I think we need to systemically show our connection around that. And I think that's a, the bond and mill is a, is a huge, when I look at my, you know, the first 90 days, so to speak, on the job that is there, we need to clearly understand what our position is around the bond and mill. And, and obviously, that salary compensation schedule is a huge part to allow us to sustain that long-term and beyond. Do we know the next couple of years, we have the means to do that? There's, I appreciate the work that's in there, however, that can't be good enough. And so we need to make sure we're clearly understanding if we're going to go out to bond and mill, that means we need to build trust and an understanding within our community to do this work. And people need to see that we are all working in the same direction. All families want to see the success of our students. And we can't hold that over people's heads because, because it's about control. We need to make sure that this is about not, it's not about being right, it's about doing what's right.
All right, thank you. We now give you an opportunity to ask any questions you may have of individual directors or from the board.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And we, and I'm going to, I'm going to put you on the spot with a question I ask you during, during my interview as well. It's something I ask some of our candidates in our interview questions as we go through this work, which I think is a vital one. If you can define for me what a successful Douglas County School District graduate is, I greatly appreciate it. So what's a successful Douglas County School District graduate?
Just trying to keep it consistent, but we can go the other way from Director Hanson. Go ahead.
Sorry. Oh, there? I got it. Thanks. Okay, thank you. I think that looks different for so, I mean, I think that looks different for every single student. And I think that recognizing and acknowledging that, that it is unique to each and every student, the, the way that you shared when we were speaking yesterday in your interview, and I may have you use your words, because it resonated with me so much with how every single student, you were talking about how we produce different, say that again. That's what I'm trying to say, and it was so perfectly said. That's exactly what I would love for you to repeat, please.
I will repeat at the end, let every guys go first, then I'll jump in.
Okay, well, I will just, what, what you shared was that this is essentially the only industry where every single student that leaves is a unique, we're basically, we're sending unique and different students into the world every single day. And I think if I can circle that back to what, what, how we define that, it's, it's really recognizing and celebrating that every single one of those students is different and has a different definition of that. And how we reach that, again, I always come back to our staff, but is through the people we have who work with these students every single day.
Thank you.
For me, it's, I guess I should preface this by saying, we see a lot of successful Douglas County graduates. And so I can picture very easily what that looks like. It's, it's harder to describe, but it's, it's, it's a student that knows themselves well, that have felt like they have gone through a foundation of belonging, a foundation where they know that people are advocating for them, but when they leave, they know that they have choices. The, the, the playing field has been leveled that says that I can choose whatever I want in terms of my career, my pathway, whether that's directly into the workforce, whether that's into the military. But it's a graduate that just has that confidence, that knows himself well, has this incredible foundation to do whatever they desire to choose and are able to leave us and confidently choose the path that makes sense for them.
I think for our Douglas County School District, we need to see our teachers be happy. We need to see our kids in their schools and they feel safe and there's no fear. Our teachers and our leaders are approachable. Our parents can go in and talk, our, our, anything's accessible. We meet the needs of all of our students. And that means that students will get the skills in education to truly become that critical thinker.
For what I think of when I think of a successful graduate from Douglas County, I just go right back to our mission and vision, because we don't have those, right? We better go look at them hard. And the key parts, I think, they're helping each student achieve his or her individual potential, realizing that those potentials will vary. Also realizing that it may take a different amount of resources to achieve that for each individual. But I believe we succeed when those individuals come as close to their potential as possible. And then I look at the second half of it, those three tracks that we identified, and some of them you discussed in detail tonight, whether you're getting ready for post-secondary, to be able to go to the school of choice and pursue that continuing education, whether you're going directly into the workforce to be prepared and wanted and desires and have the skills equipped to succeed, succeed in that vocation, or whether you're going into military service. Here's the one place that I personally think we need a fourth track. And I've said this before up here, for our students with special needs, we should also ensure that they can achieve independent living and can self-advocate. One of the best things that I've seen in this district is when we had a Bridge student sit up there, Mike Nichols. I know because he went with my daughter to Bridge. And he self-advocated for an in-person graduation. I thought, that night, I said, that's what success looks like from the Bridge program. And I think we need that fourth track right up there in a parallel with the other three. But that's how I would define it.
Thank you.
So for me, it's not necessarily about the grades, even though I'm a parent who kind of harps on my kids for grades. It's not about that. I think it's about how they leave and feel confidence and that they have resilience, that they're able to have some side, some sort of path for themselves. And I recognize that those changed, it changed for me. But just to have a confidence in who they are and what direction they want to go, knowing that it's okay to change that direction if at any time it doesn't feel what's right for them. So just building character is, is what I see as a success, leaving here.
Thank you.
Everyone said exactly what I wanted to say. It comes down to our mission statement, every, every kid reaching their potential and going out into the real world after high school, whether that track is college or military. And that's why I appreciate everything you've done with the CTE program, because I think that's very important as well. And like Director Williams said, just the opportunity to even change that path if you want. And so having that foundation and academics and confidence, like Director Ray mentioned, I think is very important.
Great, thank you.
What a great question. I love that question. So, and it's nice to go last, so. You know, it makes me think, Director Hanson and I did a, we tried to do it- it makes me think, Director Hanson and I did a, we tried to do it in person, and then ICE hit, and we did a virtual conversation with the community. And I brought up the portrait of a graduate program or concept. And because I think our mission statement is so high level, right? But to be successful in implementing and helping kids reach their full potential, we really need to define it a little bit more. But I think we need to do that with the community. And I see that program as an opportunity to bring the community together and have very meaningful dialogue. And so I used an example from Utah. They have a state-level portrait of a graduate program. And I really liked the overall concept where they talk about depth of skills in like academic mastery, wellness, civic and financial economic literacy, and then also digital literacy. So those are areas where you would have depth of knowledge. But then it goes into needing to have autonomous skills to be successful. So they define it as communication, critical thinking, problem-solving, creativity, innovation, collaboration, and teamwork. So it's that whole segment of skills. And then finally, they have a grouping that's around purpose, that guides life decisions. And it's defined as honesty, integrity, responsibility, hard work and resilience, lifelong learning, service, and respect. And I know that's a really long list, and it may be too many things, but I think what I love about it is, it's a roadmap that maybe we could use to try to build our community and work together as a team and help define those skills. So I think we should be doing all of these things, but we probably need to figure out a way to simplify that a little bit more.
Yeah. And I appreciate that, because I, in doing this work for 20 years, I think one of the things that I would love for you to envision is, you know, when I've had a chance to sit down as a counselor, if you're the counselor with me, hand-in-hand, working with the students, I'm not sure, and I think you probably maybe see it with your own kiddos, when you see a student who's academically, socially, and emotionally confident, it is unreal when you start thinking what's possible. And it's also then students defining what success is for themselves. If I had to ask you the question and say, what is a successful graduate from our parents' lens? And what is a successful graduate from our students' lens? I challenge you to say, I bet you those are two different measures of success. And I think one of the things we struggle the most with, I think, as a district, is we need to understand those unique differences. I heard many times in one-on-one conversations with families, and, you know, I paint the picture, saying, is there any different level of success if a student is carrying a tool belt, a briefcase, or a scalpel? And my response is, is absolutely not. Those are equally successful opportunities if that's a student's passion. Is that exactly what we believe in? Imagine being a student, knowing that success for you is already predetermined, and feeling like you have to live up to those expectations. One of the things we have to do in our work is making sure students know themselves better than anything. I have always said to my kiddos that I have is, is when you know what to do, when you don't know what to do, it's one of the most incredible skills you can have, because then you're more confident in your abilities. The essential skills we challenge our students with, the knowledge they have to reason through those things are obviously extremely important. And at the same time, are we creating on-ramp and off-ramps for students to have success and engage in those opportunities through our K-12 experience? When you see the number of times our students potentially either change major or don't persist on, my question is, why? And are we asking and getting feedback from our students why that is the case? When we see in our pathway programming increase, do we see a direct correlation to student success post-high school? And those are the questions that we need to continue to kind of dig into, because when we start talking about things like student agency in our students, opportunity knowledge for our students, demanding rigorous preparedness, talking about breaking down barriers for our students, demanding in rigor that is there for our students, aligning our work. The work we're doing with literacy is extremely important to get to this place, and we made a $4.5 million commitment in literacy of our students. How is that not a huge celebration to invest in our kids? If students don't have those literacy and numeracy skills at an early age, the thing that I've been working on in my head for a very long time is this idea of what is our DCSD/K-12 promise that we make to our students around postgraduate success that has to start at a very early age, with our students feeling like they're seen, heard, and they belong. And we need to make sure we are doing that intentionally and not rounding our edges of expectations for our kids. And that means sometimes, as parents, we have to live in the dissonance that's created around maybe students not being successful, but finding every possible way to support them, to help them define their own success. And then we provide those opportunities like Matt, systemically within our system, to our students can tap into those passions and make those connections in those core areas as well. I don't know if I have any more time, but I have many questions, but I can stop too.
I was going to say, you could ask more questions or a closing statement.
Obviously, I want to honor time. Is there a particular time structure you have as well? I just want to honor where you're at.
There is not.
Okay. I do have one important question, and I know it will probably be uniquely different from each one of you, but I think will give me some context. If I had to ask you, each and every one of you, to say, this is the one thing I want from our superintendent, what's the one thing you want from our superintendent?
And we can go the opposite way?
In the middle.
Okay, I'll start. We'll start in the middle, and I guess we'll jump outwards, just to make it. I was just told I get one word from Director Martin. So my one word, if I had to pick of all the values and things, I'll shoot between a concrete and abstraction, which is alignment, right? Which, to define alignment to me, from a superintendent's terms or superintendent's viewpoint, is understand the ends, understand the strategic vision. So the ends, the policy governance, what we're trying to achieve. But then figure out the how. That's the job of the superintendent. And make sure that both the intent and the implementation that aligns with that intent goes throughout the district, through our classified staff, licensed, non-licensed, everyone. And it's not just internally, it's also that the outside community, the parents, their business partners, the stakeholders also understand that vision and see where we're going as a district. So my one word would be alignment.
Thank you.
My one word is leadership.
Director, go ahead.
Mine is transparency, which to me means not telling me what I want to hear, but what's actually truthful.
Okay.
Communication.
Strong through the highs and the lows.
Really? We only can say one word? Is that, was that established?
I said one thing. I said one thing. Not one word. So yes, but I'm good with whatever you want to go. Absolutely.
So if I were to say one word, I'd say heart. Because I think when your heart beats for public education, for our children, for our staff, everything works. And so I would just say, first and foremost is, is heart.
Thank you.
These, I might be having a problem today. I love these questions. I think each time we're asked something where we each individually weigh in, it's so eye-opening that we, as a board, have some work to do. It's pretty impossible to give someone seven really important characteristics and say, this is the most important thing, go do a great job. And so I think I actually appreciate that for highlighting some work that we, as a board, need to do. I do think there is a lot of overlap in the qualities that have been mentioned. Heart might be my favorite. I was going to say climate and culture, but truly everything that each individual said. It takes a strong leader to create a climate and culture. It takes trust and communication to effectively create that climate and culture. Can't create it without heart. And aligning the direction that our district is going with all of the work that was put into the strategic plan. The strategic plan was the map that we tried to use, that we want to use to create the climate and culture. And so when you put all of those things together, I think that's the leader that we're looking for.
Great. You know, this work in the education system, the one-word answer is, I apologize, or the one thing, because it's not easy just to define a single characteristic or a single thing. I will also say, as we do this work, as a superintendent, it would be my responsibility to ensure that I make that commitment every day, those characteristics of alignment, leadership, transparency, communication, being strong, having heart and climate and culture. You can't be an educator if you don't do those things. And I think one of the things I would challenge us as we do this work is, is that continued piece of always having positive intent as we do this work. Everybody really does want to do what's right. To the point of the how that is there is, we need to be crystal clear around that how. But as you do that, you got to collaboratively develop that understanding. And kind of the closing side of this, the work that I've so appreciated over the last 15 years being in this district is the ability to help create a vision of where we're going and have a greater impact on our, on our community, which includes our students, staff, families, families that don't have students in our community as well. And this perception of, too often, this district, we operate in negative connotations around things like public education. Public education includes all of our schools. You know, as a direct liaison with our charter schools that were there, was I really proud of the high-quality schools that we had for our students? Absolutely. Am I very proud of our 70 other district-operated schools and the work that we're doing? Absolutely. And can we continue to keep better what we're doing? Absolutely. And a strength and a weakness will be around those expectations that are there. But that expectations can't be hollow. It has to come with intentional support, intentional structures, and people feeling like they're valued in that process. And that is an extremely artful and skillful way you need to navigate that work. And you have to have a lot of courage and strength to be able to do that work. And people can say what they want to be able to say, and if you're doing good work that are there, people are going to challenge you. And I sure hope that's what, that's what we can do, because that's how we get better. And I think it's important that challenging ourselves is about achieving the outcome versus questioning the intent. And I challenge us, just as we move forward, I think, as a district, is how are we very clear, whether it's through our strategic plan, as we do this work, through challenging your leader to say, I challenge you to define the how as you do this work, and making sure that it's done with a level of quality and care that is there. The work we need to do is about having a direct impact on our kids, and that really is about impacting with our staff. And it really is about making sure our families feel 100% connected to our community. Douglas County School District, in my opinion, should always have been Douglas County Community School District, because I think it's something we need to talk about, that sense of how we build and develop community intentionally as we do this work. And that, to me, is what the intrigue of this job is about, is there's a really unique opportunity we have. And too many people have said, gosh, why do you want to take on that challenge? And I go, that is the most exciting part of this work, because it's not a challenge, it's the opportunity of what we will become as we do this work. And how do we do that with crystal clarity, intentional systems? I said this to you yesterday, and I will repeat it again. From a systems-oriented guy, I will always say, your systems are perfectly aligned with your results. We need to make sure we are clear in understanding what our systems are working towards and those clear outcomes, because it may need to be systems reevaluation of what we're doing, because you can't change the expectations if you have the same systems and the work that you're doing. And we've got to be really clear around what that is. That's the exciting work as we do this. I've said it time and time again, and I apologize for the broken record side of this place. This place has an incredible place in my heart, and it's something that I wake up every day. And I'll always say, as a principal, one of the things that I always did before I got out of bed is I thought about the five to 10 people, whether that's students or staff, that I want to have a positive impact on, and I make that commitment every day to go seek them out. When I wake up every morning as an executive director of schools, I think about that same message of, how do I have a positive impact on somebody's life? I sure hope when we wake up, that's our goal. It's not about me, it's about the positive impact. You have somebody else to see them be successful. I want to see the seven of you be extremely successful, because you represent our community. It's my role to ensure that we have that in place, and I'm excited about that opportunity. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of this process. I love this district. We'll continue to love this district. I just appreciate the opportunity to engage with you today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Windsor. And at this point, with no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a move by Ray, motion by Ray, excuse me.
Second.
Second by Williams. I will now call the roll. Directors Hanson?
Aye.
Meek?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Weiniger?
Aye.
Pass to seven to zero, and we are hereby adjourned.